Go ahead and get started, and then we'll call the order. Thank you, Brian, and I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Homewood City Council for May 12th, 2025. Thank you for being here. Before we get started, we have a proclamation to provide. The mayor is going to provide that proclamation, Mental Health Awareness Month. So everybody can come up?
Come on up.
How are you?
Doing good. How are you?
Fine. You're just going to stand here and try not to be embarrassed while I read about you, okay?
Okay.
All right. Whereas, mental health is an essential component of overall well-being, and far too many individuals, especially young people, silently struggle with mental health challenges every day. And whereas, the month of May is nationally recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month, a time to raise awareness, reduce stigma, and ensure that individuals and families have access to mental health resources they need. And whereas, the city of Homewood is proud to recognize Ally Grace Broadhead, a dedicated and compassionate advocate who has made an indelible impact on our community through her leadership, her heart, and her unwavering commitment to mental health awareness and suicide prevention. And whereas, over the past year, Ally Grace has worked in partnership with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention to bring the Out of Darkness Campaign Walk to fruition, an initiative created specifically for high school and college students that meet young people where they are and offer support, hope, and connection. And whereas, Ally Grace's advocacy began with a deeply personal experience at the age of 12, when her best friend confided in her about suicidal thoughts. The conversation opened her eyes to the unforeseen struggles many face and inspired her to act. Encouraging her friends to seek help was just the beginning of what would become a life-changing journey. And whereas, from founding the Homewood High School Kindness Club to creating the Keeping Kindness Foundation, a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit dedicated to supporting mental health initiatives and suicide prevention, Ally Grace has shown the kindness and action that can create lasting change. And whereas, through her collaboration with AFSP and tireless grassroots efforts in Homewood and beyond, she continues to break down stigma, raise awareness, and connect individuals to lifesaving resources, all while reminding us that no one should ever feel alone in their darkest moments. And whereas, the city of Homewood recognizes that suicide is preventable, that mental health must be a priority, and that we are all responsible for building a community rooted in empathy, understanding, and support. Now therefore, I, Alex Wyatt, Mayor of the city of Homewood, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Homewood, Alabama, and call upon our citizens, schools, and organizations to observe this month with programs and activities that foster awareness, hope, and healing. Be it further resolved that the city of Homewood honors Ally Grace Broadhead for her outstanding leadership, advocacy, and dedication to improving the lives of others through kindness, connection, and compassion. Would you like to say anything? It's up to you. You don't have to, but if you want to.
I can. I can.
Would you like to? Go ahead.
I do just want to say thank you so much for just having the big honor of being able to share something that I'm very passionate about with the city of Homewood. It does mean a lot to me knowing that there are people out there who do care about this and something that affects each and every single one of us in our own unique ways. And so the fact that we can build a community with it, it's amazing. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. We can take as many as you want. You're just fine. Take as many as you want. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, Ally Grace. We're so proud of you. I know the family's proud. So thank you for being here for that. I'd like to now ask Counselor Smith for our invocation. If you'll stand if able, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
You'll bow your heads and pray with me. Dear God, we invite your presence into our meeting tonight. Help us to approach each discussion with humility, open hearts, and clear minds. We acknowledge that true wisdom comes only from you, and we rely on you to guide our thoughts and actions. Grant us the patience to listen to one another and the grace to understand different perspectives. May everything we do be done in love and unity, always striving to reflect your will. Guide our conversations and inspire us to creative solutions. In your name we pray. Amen.
You'll face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Counselor Smith. Appreciate that. Mr. Segras, if you'll call roll, please.
Yes, sir.
Counsel Gualdney. Geer?
Here.
Alamon?
Here.
Wolverton?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Brant?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Nelms?
Here.
Andrus?
Here.
Harden?
Here.
President Jones?
I'm here. So we have 10. We have a quorum present. We have the reading of the minutes for April 28th, 2025. Do I have a motion to dispense and approve them as distributed? Counsel Wolverton?
Second.
And I believe I heard Counsel Smith second that. Any questions on that? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. Board vacancies. We have several. We have part board for opening for Ward Two and also Ward Four. And without objection, I move to open those until...
And can I just make one quick statement?
Sure.
So we are, Danielle Warren resigned her Ward Two spot on the part board, and Joe Levens, who has been serving in the Ward Four spot, has moved, his family has moved to Ward Two, and he has expressed interest. He is in the first year of his term, and he has expressed interest in taking that Ward Two spot since he is now a Ward Two resident. I just want to put that out there, but yes, we need to open both Ward Two and Ward Four.
Okay. Without objection, we'll open that until June the 9th at 4:30.
Okay.
Without objection. Okay, we also have Ward Three Library, and we need to open that up tonight without objection, June 9th also, at 4:30 for the deadline for that, for the library board.
And Dr. Kia Craft has expressed interest in returning again for another term.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for mentioning that. So that's 4:30, June the 9th. We have good news. The at-large arts council, we had two positions, and those closed today. And I'm so happy Ms. Geer has a recommendation for both of those.
I do. We had two great candidates, Terry Miller and Michelle Hazelwood Hyde, who both have put in their application, and the arts council would like us to approve their appointment.
Okay.
For the at-large positions.
There's a motion from Counsel Geer. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Counsel Smith. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. So Mr. Segras, if you'll send notes of congratulations to Michelle Hazelwood Hyde and Terry Miller for the at-large arts council.
Yes, sir.
We just have a few more here. Ward Two Beautification Board, that closed today, and unfortunately, we did not have any applicants for that. So without objection, we'll reopen it for June the 9th at 4:30. Okay?
Would that be Ward Two and Three then?
Yeah, and then Ward Three is also closed today with no applicant. So without objection, 4:30 on June the 9th as well. It's going to be a big night. And then I'll just make a reminder that Ward Four, the Abatement Board position, that's closing next Monday at 4:30. The 19th, yeah. Yeah. So that'll be next week. Are there any other board vacancies that anyone would like to bring to our attention? Okay. Okay. Additions to the agenda, I just have one addition, and this will be under Other New Business. 150525, Resolution to authorize city manager to execute settlement and purchase agreement for 185 Oxmoor Road, coming to us from Mr. Kendrick. That'll go under Other New Business. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, Mr. Harden, I believe, and Ms. Geer.
Nelms.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Nelms. Not Geer, Nelms. Ms. Nelms seconded that. Did you make that motion down here?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Mr. Harden made the motion. Counsel Nelms seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. All right, let's get moving here. 270425, under the consent agenda, that, dropping that. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, that, I did hear Nelms that time.
No, that was...
No way. Okay. I heard Mr. Wolverton. He's right here. All right, okay. We never had this problem when you were up here. Counsel Smith, Counsel Wolverton seconded that. Okay, for the last time, Counsel Smith made the motion, and Counsel Alamon seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 10 to zero. The consent agenda is passed. Old business. 240325, request permission to consider property issued at 183225th Court South, coming to us from Kale Smith, our city engineer. If we can have a report from Finance, Counsel Smith.
Yes, the committee voted three to two recommending declaring the property surplus pending obtaining an accurate cost for the sale of that property. The motion made by Mr. Brant, seconded by Counsel Harden, myself, and Mr. Gualdney voted no.
Okay. And at this point, to deal with this tonight, this is an ordinance, we would need a motion for unanimous consent.
But don't we need the first reading? And also, do we get the price?
Yeah, we, oh, that's right. We do need the first, we do need the first reading.
First reading.
So let's get the first reading. Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, it's an ordinance to dispose of surplus real property. Your name by the city council is follows. hereby established and declared that the following described property in Exhibit A is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. Section Two, the mayor and clerk are authorized and directed to dispose of the property by the execution of a quick claim deed. Comming the property Fernando Ugurit pursuant to a quick claim deed attached as exhibit B upon the receipt of $15,319.20 set out in a quick claim deed. Section Three, the mayor and the city clerk authorized and directed to take any action necessary to execute any documents necessary to consummate the transfer of the property described in Exhibit B.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. And to remind everyone, if we do make the motion for unanimous consent, if it's not passed, then we'll vote on it in our next meeting, in our next council meeting. So that's really...
Yes, sir. I thought we were also trying to make sure that the property owners were in agreement with moving forward the way that we were discussing, but they weren't here last committee meeting. So just wanted to confirm that they were. This was discussed and approved.
Yeah, I spoke to Mr. Ugarte last week, and he's on board with the price. The price, the assessed value ended up at $82,9920, and the survey fee paid by the city was $7,020. So those totaled to the number that Mr. Kendrick read, $15,319.
Okay. Other questions from the council?
I just want to make one more comment. I'm going to basically say what Andy said in committee meetings the other night. I just think we need to consider the fact that we are setting a precedent here, that we are willing to sell city property. I'm not comfortable with it, but I just want everybody to realize that we are, in this case, possibly setting a precedent for what it is you're...
Good. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. If I'm able to identify you correctly, is there a motion for unanimous consent?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so that was Counsel Andrus, and that was Counsel Geer, who seconded that. Mr. Segras, if you'll call roll for unanimous consent, please.
Yes, sir. Counsel Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, and that passes 10 to zero. We already have the approval from Finance, three to two recommendation. So we do not need a separate motion for that. Mr. Segras, if you'll call roll for the ordinance.
Yes, sir. Counsel Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Nelms?
No.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, and that passes, is that eight to two?
Eight to.
Eight to two. And that's ordinance number 2935. 070425, request for consideration to add a street light at 1455 Overlook Road, coming to us from Randy Hambley. We have a report from Finance. Mrs. Smith?
Yes, the committee voted four to zero to recommend approving this. The motion was made by Mr. Gualdney and seconded by Mr. Brant.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. That's Resolution 25-67. 230425, request authorize city manager to sign a contract with White Oak Solutions for IT engineering services, coming to us from Brandon Sims. A report from Finance. Counsel Smith?
Yes, we heard from Mr. Sims about this, and it's necessary for us to get our systems up to the level that we need to have them, and the committee voted five to zero to recommend approving. The motion was made by Mr. Gualdney and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
Thank you for that report. Any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. That's Resolution 25-68. 240425, request to execute a contract with Walcraft for creek wall footing repairs to, coming to us from Kale Smith. Report from Finance. Mrs. Smith?
It's interesting, because I just looked at a invoice for this very item. This is for our creek wall repairs due to the collapse that happened, and we voted, the committee voted five to zero to recommend approving this. The motion was made by Mr. Brant and seconded by Mr. Gualdney.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions for Finance? Comments?
Counsel Jones, I just have one question for Kale. Is this, is there a corresponding item related to this now going to committee referral for 7-Eleven Broadway, or are those, are those related at all? Are they different properties? They're different items. So the item that you just voted on was for the creek wall footings that are across from the creek from behind 7-Eleven Broadway. So we talked about this last week at committee. They were...
They were mobilized?
Right, that's right.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there are separate...
And then the one that's on the referral agenda is for a pool liner that happened in the backyard of 7-Eleven Broadway.
Thank you so much. We covered a lot last Monday and...
Yeah.
There was nothing going on last week. No problem. Okay, any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. That's 25, Resolution 25-69. 250425, request for consideration to pay invoice for auditing service for BMSS, coming to us from our city manager. Report from Finance. Mrs. Smith?
Yes, the committee voted five to zero to recommend approving. The motion was made by Mr. Brant, seconded by Mr. Harden.
Thank you for that report. Any questions, comments for Finance? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. That's Resolution 25-70. 280425, request to declare miscellaneous police department IT equipment surplus, coming to us from Brandon Sims. Report from Finance first. Mrs. Smith?
Yes, after last week confusing our chief of police with our fire chief, I've got it right now. I just saw Brandon and ran with it. We, the committee voted five to zero to recommend approving, surplusing these items. The motion was made by Counsel Brant and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
Thank you for that report. Any initial questions at this point? Okay, Mr. Kendrick, if you can give us our first reading for this.
Yes, it's an ordinance to declare certain property as surplus. hereby established and declared that the following described personal property of the city is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. It's declared surplus property. Property is described as five pages of miscellaneous IT equipment. Section Two, the mayor and the city clerk authorize and direct it to dispose of the property by auction to the highest bidder.
Thank you for that reading. Is there a motion for unanimous consent?
So moved.
Okay. Counsel Smith, and I heard you this time, Counsel Sims. All right. If you'll call roll, please, for unanimous consent. Mr. Segras?
Yes, sir. Counsel Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, and that passes 10 to zero.
Motion to approve.
We've already had it approved from Finance. So if you'll call roll for the ordinance, Mr. Segras?
Yes, sir. Counsel Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, and that passes 10 to zero. That's ordinance number 2936, is adopted. Thank you for your help on that. 290425, request permission for city manager to execute contract with Shoal Engineering for engineering design and Romtech for the purchase of a restroom pavilion facility at the Greenway Soccer Park. First, a report from Finance.
We are very excited about this. The committee voted five to zero, recommend approving, signing the contract, and the purchase of the facility. Motion was made by Mr. Gualdney and seconded by Mr. Harden.
Okay, thank you for that report. And just to note, we have two separate resolutions for this. So the first one will be for Shoal Engineering, and so we already have the five-zero recommendation. All in favor of that resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. That's Resolution 2571. And then the second one is for Romtech for the purchase of the restroom. We have a five-zero recommendation on that. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. That's Resolution 2572. Okay, this one is a multiple item as well. 300425, request for consideration of ordinances and resolutions associated with the 2025 general election and runoff, coming to us from Mr. Kendrick and Mr. Segras. A report from Finance. Counsel Smith?
Yes, we had multiple items that we needed to approve. Some of them are resolutions, some of them are ordinances. The committee voted five to zero to recommend approving them. The motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Mr. Gualdney.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mrs. Smith. The first resolution is related to municipal election service agreement, and I have it. If anyone has any questions on that, we have a recommendation from Finance. Any questions on that one? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 10 to zero. That's Resolution 25-73. And then the second resolution is compensation for absentee election manager. Are there any questions on that? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. That's Resolution 2574. And then the last one is ESNS, and that is, I think that's the last resolution that we have on that, and that is related to, let me just have it printed here, naming the different, let's see, voter assist terminals, all the poll pads, all of that. Any questions on that? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to zero. That's Resolution 2575. Okay, and then the last item is the ordinance calling the election. So Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us a first reading, please.
Yes, sir. I'll try to summarize this rather lengthy. It's an ordinance to call and provide for the general municipal election to be held by the city on Tuesday, August 26, 2025, and to provide for runoff election on Tuesday, September 23, 2025, if necessary, required by law. Heredown as follows, that the following pursuant to Alabama Code, Section 114621, the regular municipal election is to be held on August, Tuesday, August 26, 2025, for the purpose of electing a mayor to be elected from the city at large, and a board of aldermen consisting of one alderman or member of city council from each ward. Said aldermen are members of city council to be elected by the qualified voters of the several respective wards voting separately in each such ward, which says officer here to for to designate as by ordinance as follows, City Council Ward One, City Council Ward Two, City Council Ward Three, City Council Ward Four. Section Two, that the following places are voting places to be, where voting will be held in each ward. Ward One is a senior citizen, eighteen, excuse me, eight, sixteen, Oak Grove Road. Ward Two is Homewood Rec Center. One, sixteen thirty-two Oxmoor Road. Ward Three is Homewood Public Library, seventeen twenty-one Oxmoor Road. Ward Four is Homewood City Hall, first floor, 2550 Nineteenth Street South. Absentee voting will be at the Homewood City Hall, second floor, city clerk's office. Section Three, the chief of police is authorized and directed to reserve parking spaces during the hours that polls are open to be exclusively used by voters at the Ward Four voting location at Homewood City Hall, first floor, which spaces shall be adjacent to the rear of Homewood City Hall and the surface parking lot. Section Four, the mayor shall give notice of the election by posting in three places on June 10, 2025, as required by law. Sets out the notices required by the Code of Alabama for the calling of the election. Sets out the voting places and the election officials, which will be the mayor, voted at large, and each ward, city council member voted from each ward. Section Seven, that fifteen days before the election, the city council will appoint qualified members of qualified electors of each respective board to hold, the election officials to hold the elections. Section Eight, the mayor should publish a list of election officials for the election at least ten days prior to August 26. Section Nine, the mayor shall make a list of qualified voters who reside within the corporate limits and who are eligible to vote at each ward in each place, and will post the same in three places in the city. Section Ten, the mayor shall cause to be printed the ballots for the regular election and for the absentee ballots. Section Eleven, a school of instruction shall be held for the election officials appointed by the city council. Section Twelve, the city council shall constitute a board of canvassers to canvass and returns and declare the results of the regular or runoff election, and shall meet at 12 o'clock noon, central daylight, Savenstein, in Homewood City Council chambers on September the 2nd and on September the 20th, for runoff as necessary. Section Three, that the records of the results of the election is ascertained and cleared by the city council acting as the board of canvassers shall be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Section Fourteen, the mayor and the city clerk authorize and direct it to pay and cause to be paid out of general fund any fees necessary for the municipal election. Section Fifteen, the election shall be held in all respects as directed, required in conform with the laws of the state of Alabama, relating to regular and municipal runoff elections.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick.
Motion for unanimous consent?
Okay, moved by Counsel Sims. Counsel Smith, if you'll call roll for unanimous consent, please. Mr. Segras?
Yes, sir. Counsel Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Brant?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelms?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President Jones.
Yes, and that passes ten to zero. We already have the finance recommendation, five to zero, for this. If you'll call roll for the ordinance, please, Mr. Segras.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gere.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelms.
Yes.
Andrus.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President Jones.
Yes, and that passes ten to zero, ordinance twenty-nine thirty-seven. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick, for all the work on those ordinances. That's a lot. Moving on, thirty-one oh-four twenty-five, request authorized city manager to sign an agreement with ICC CDS for Laserfish support. Oh, Brandon Sims is still here, so I'm glad you're here. Report from finance, Mrs. Smith.
We heard from Mr. Sims, and he corrected that we weren't doing nineteen eighty-five Laserfish like I used when I wrote my thesis. And we voted five to zero to recommend approving this. Motion was made by Mr. Harden and seconded by Mr. Brandt.
Thank you for that report. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, hopefully I'm correct, twenty-five seventy-six on the resolution number. Forty-three oh-four twenty-five, request for consideration to create deputy finance director, chief accountant position, coming to us from our city manager, Mr. Adams. Report from finance, Counselor Smith.
The committee voted five to zero to recommend approving this position. The motion was made by Mr. Brandt and seconded by Mr. Harden.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any questions, comments on that?
This is eighty-nine to one hundred and thirty-nine.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes ten to zero. That's resolution twenty-five seventy-seven. Thirty-two oh-four twenty-five, request for consideration of crosswalk for intersection of Mayfair and Ridge Road, coming to us from Counselor Smith and Nelms. A report from public safety, and I believe, let's see, Mr. Harden has public safety denied.
Yes, the committee voted four to zero to recommend approval, providing, provided the work is done in-house by the city. The motion was made by Counselor Jody Brandt and seconded by yours truly.
Okay, great, thank you for that report. Is there a motion for unanimous consent on this?
So moved. Yes.
Okay, okay, I believe that was, that was Gere, and I believe that was, that was Nelms. I heard you loud and clear that time. All right, if you'll call roll for unanimous consent, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gere.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelms.
Yes.
Andrus.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President Jones.
Yes, and I apologize, we did not have our first reading, so. So, Mr. Kendrick, I know you're eager to give us the first reading.
It's an ordinance to provide for installation of a pedestrian crosswalk across Ridge Road. If the intersection Ridge Road and Mayfair is described in exhibit A and to provide penalties for the violation thereof, pure and plain by the city councils, follows, chief of police shall be directed to install pedestrian crosswalk across Ridge Road at the northern side of the intersection Ridge Road and Mayfair Drive, as described in exhibit A. Section two, all drivers and motor vehicles defined in the highway code shall yield to pedestrians located within the crosswalk as defined here and above. Section three, to any person perma, violates any provision of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by section one dash eight of the Code of Ordinances. Section four, all ordinances or parts of ordinance to contrair provision are repealed. Section five, any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of common jurisdiction, such holdings shall not affect other parts provisions of the ordinance. Section six, the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor and city council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kendrick. We don't need to have the vote for unanimous consent again, do we?
No, sir.
Okay, wonderful. We have the approval from public safety, four to zero. Any questions?
I just have one comment, Counselor Jones, which is, it's not part of the ordinance, but part of the discussion was also upgrading the ramps. And I just want to thank our public works crew for taking care of those at the same time on both this and the next item, as we do these projects. Thanks.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, Mr. Segras, if you'll call roll for the ordinance.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gere.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelms.
Yes.
Andrus.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President Jones.
Yes, and that passes ten to zero. That's ordinance twenty-nine thirty-eight. Thirty-three oh-four twenty-five, request for consideration of crosswalk for intersection of Carr and Broadway, coming to us from Counselor Smith. And we have a report from public safety, Mr. Harden.
Yes, the committee voted four to zero to recommend approval, providing the work be done in-house by the city. Motion was made by Counselor Brandt and seconded by Counselor Harden.
Yours truly.
Yours truly.
All right, Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us our first reading, please.
It's an ordinance to provide for the installation of a pedestrian crosswalk across Carr Avenue. It's intersection Carr Avenue and Broadway Street. Pure and plain by the city council, as follows, chief of police shall be directed to install pedestrian crosswalk across Carr Avenue at the intersection Carr Avenue and Broadway Street, as described in exhibit A. Section two, any person violating this ordinance shall be punished as provided by section one dash eight of the Code of Ordinances. Section three, that all orders or parts of ordinance contracted or provisions hereof are hereby repealed. Section four, any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional and valid by a court of common jurisdiction, such holdings shall not affect other parts provisions of the ordinance, not affected thereby. Section five, the provision of the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor and city council.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Any questions, comments on that? Is there a motion for unanimous consent?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I heard Counselor Smith and Counselor Nelms down there seconded that. If you'll call roll, please, for unanimous consent, Mr. Segras.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gere.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelms.
Yes.
Andrus.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President Jones.
Yes, and that passes ten to zero. And we already have a motion from public safety, if you'll call roll, please, on the ordinance, Mr. Segras.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gere.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelms.
Yes.
Andrus.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President Jones.
Yes, that passes ten to zero. That's ordinance number twenty-nine thirty-nine. Okay, thirty-four oh-four twenty-five, request for discussion of safety issues at the intersection of Oxmoor and St. Charles. There's really no action, but we do have a report from public safety, Mr. Harden.
Sure, the committee voted four to zero to recommend creating an ad hoc committee to alleviate parking issues. The motion was made by Counselor Harden, yours truly, and seconded by Counselor Brandt. This item was then carried over for further review.
Okay, so I don't believe we have any action on this, other than I guess we could have the ad hoc committee. So all in favor of the ad hoc committee, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes ten to zero. Okay, thirty-six oh-four twenty-five, request permission to allow a parking space in the right-of-way at nine oh-eight Highland Road. Ms. Sims, garden, coming to us from Kell Smith. We have a recommendation from public safety committee, Mr. Harden.
Yes, committee voted four to zero to recommend approval. Motion was made by Counselor Brandt and seconded by Counselor Harden. It looks like Brandt and Harden were the only ones at that.
You did a great job. You did your service. Very good. Okay, we have the recommendation from public safety. Are there any questions, comments on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes ten to zero. That's resolution twenty-five seventy-eight. Okay, thirty-eight oh-four twenty-five, request for consideration of assigned variance at twenty-eight twenty-two Central Avenue. Let's see, we have a report from special issues.
Yes, Counselor Jones, so the committee convened at nine oh-one PM last Monday and considered the last ever council signed variance request. They voted five to zero to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending a public hearing set for June ninth.
Okay, thank you for that.
The motion was made by Counselor Andrus and seconded by Counselor Alamon.
I'm sure it was, yes. So, I'll say, thank you for that report, and unfortunately, we just have to, we're going to carry that over to June ninth for the public hearing at six PM. So without objection, we'll carry that over. Oh-nine oh-four twenty-five, public hearing set for June sixth at six PM for sixteen oh-one Park Lane, Parkview Lane, and I'm going to take all these together. There's oh-nine oh-four twenty-five, there's ten oh-four twenty-five, there's eleven oh-four twenty-five, there's twelve oh-four twenty-five, there's thirteen oh-four twenty-five, and without objection, we're going to carry those over for our public hearing on, guess what night? June ninth.
June ninth.
At six PM. So are there any objections to carrying all those items over? Okay. That'll be a fun night. Okay, if you'll look over the committee referral agenda. And Mr. Wolverton, do you have, do you have items here? Yep, it looks like. Yeah, you got a couple, okay. Looks good. Are there any, is there a motion to approve the committee referral agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Gere, and I believe that was Andrus, seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes ten to zero. Okay, other new business. Eleven oh-five twenty-five, request for consideration of an ABC zero-two-zero restaurant retail liquor license for Yummy Bowl at one oh-nine Wildwood Parkway, coming to us from both Segras. Do we have a report from you on this? Do we have no objection from?
No objection, sir.
From fire and police?
Both are good.
Okay, so is there a motion as to having no objection?
Yes, to the issuance of the license.
Okay, and that's Counselor Smith, and who seconded that? Okay, Counselor Nelms. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes ten to zero. Twelve oh-five twenty-five, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period of April twenty-ninth through tonight, from J.J. Bischoff, and we have a report from Mrs. Smith on this.
Yes, Mr. Waltney was actually looking over these invoices, and he didn't quite get through all of them, so I actually approved some for Kelly that needed to be paid right away. And with the exception of those, we're going to carry the rest of those over until our meeting next Monday on the nineteenth.
In light of that, Mr. Kendrick, do we need a resolution for the few that we approved here?
Okay.
Okay, so we do have a resolution.
Oh, has a resolution.
Prepared for that, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve? Okay, Mrs. Smith.
I'll move the ones that I approved, yes.
To approve, okay. And Counselor Nelms. Okay, any questions on that? We'll get all of them handled for next time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's ten to zero, resolution twenty-five seventy-nine. And then our last item, fifteen oh-five twenty-five, resolution to authorize city manager to execute settlement and purchase agreement for one eighty-five Oxmoor Road. We had that sent out today. Very exciting news, any questions on that? Is there a motion to, to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Smith, and that was Ms. Andrus. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes ten to zero. That's resolution twenty-five dash eighty. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank all the city employees for We Love Homewood Day, and it sort of turned into We Love Homewood Weekend with the various events having to be moved around. It wasn't easy to deal with the shifting weather all day, so appreciate all they did and glad that we, you know, got to do at least some of the, some of the events, and appreciate all their work on it.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I guess we'll just go down the line, Counselor Gere.
Yes, just reminding everyone that Arts Council meets tomorrow night, six PM, in the clerk's office, and we'll look forward to meeting our new members. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gere. Counselor Alamon.
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wolverton?
Just setting public works to follow public safety?
We probably need to.
But we're meeting, we're meeting next week. We're doing council lane committees, so I'm probably going to.
And a reminder that Sanford will be here.
Yeah, Sanford is going to be here.
We're going to do planning and development at five.
So I'm going to.
People could show up after work and see that. So if we could set everything else to four or five.
Yeah, I was going to do four, but I'm just going to go ahead and say I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten items on referral. And, yeah.
Already in.
A few already there that could take some time, so. I mean, I probably need to start before, I think a couple of them are going to be carried over. We'll say I'll start at four.
That's for finance?
Finance.
Yeah.
And you have one item?
No, I've got two. Well, I've got two for Public Works. One that we have for Public Safety, though, and people express concern about coming early, so in this case, the latest slot possible would be great for that. I know we're combined, but Public Works, I don't, I don't think it matters.
Probably around 5:45.
Yeah, because I'm, I mean, I would imagine that at five.
Sanford's presenting.
Well, I know. I'm fully aware.
They, they may not be done. My worry is that they wouldn't be done by six, and we have to, we have a council meeting at six.
I, yep, totally understand. I was there last week, too.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I don't know.
But.
Should we move Finance to 3:30?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, is that, well, the question is, I can move it to 3:30, but if nobody's here, it's not going to really do me any good.
Keep it at four. We'll do the next weekend.
I mean, Carlos, is that, is earlier than four a possibility for you? Not really?
Monday. Next Monday.
I mean, I, okay, well, you said, I mean.
I'm gone.
Oh, you're not here. Andy, I don't know about Andy, because Andy's not here.
I'm good.
For four.
At the 19?
Yeah.
3:30, I'm good. I'm good.
You can do 3:30?
It's all right now.
Okay, can you do 3:30? Okay, well, that means three of us will be here, so we'll set it for 3:30.
We can do, yeah, we can do Public Works. How long do you think Finance will take, Barry?
I don't know. I mean, that's not guaranteed.
You think Finance will be an hour, Barry? You think Finance will be an hour?
I mean, I can try on 45 minutes.
I'm just asking.
Well, let me, let me ask this. Do you feel like the audit report's going to be ready for next week? No.
No, June 7.
So, so, okay, so then we can probably, I can probably be done in 45 minutes, maybe 40, yeah, because two of the items that might take the longest time are probably going to get carried over.
Okay. And P and D was needing to be set at five.
We were going to set it at five, but, I mean, you want to say 3:45 instead of 3:30? Does that make a big difference?
That'd be good.
Okay.
I, I think Public Safety, who's setting that tonight? I know we have one.
I am.
How many items are on that agenda?
I thought it was just the one that was the committee.
So, that's our item from last time that we carried over then?
Yeah, but that's not, like, they're not going to need to meet about that this week, right, on Monday, are they?
They're meeting for that one next Monday, yeah. We, we carried it over last time to meet for this coming Monday.
Okay, so.
I'm at five.
I'm at, I'm at 3:45.
I guess my request is, could the Public Safety item be closer to, to council meeting, since there was a concern about people being there? That's Public Works. I don't care about Public Works. It can be earlier. I'm, I was only concerned about the Public Safety item being late enough that people could come.
4:45.
I was hoping it could be like 5:45, but, so that people could get here from work.
I don't think there's a chance that the.
That they'll be done in time.
I would be shocked if it's less than.
We're going to be running in here in the last second.
Okay.
I mean, it, it don't matter to me when you set stuff, but it.
True.
I, I, I think planning and development is going to take as long as the window is.
Well, let's do this. I can set Public Works, and Public Safety can follow Public Works for this meeting. Can we do that, since it hadn't been set yet?
Yeah, I, I got confused.
I, I would set Public Works to follow Finance, and then have Public Safety fall after that, so it's as late as possible for people to come.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'm confused. I'm sorry. Are, are we talking about St. Charles and Oxmoor again? I thought we gave that to a committee.
No, we were talking about the traffic calming item that was carried over last week. St. Charles got, didn't get carried over. It got, it got moved to an ad hoc committee.
Okay, that's, that's what, that's the one I thought you were setting it for.
Sorry, yeah, just to clarify. Yeah, it has nothing to do with St. Charles.
Mr. Segrist, are you clear?
So, Public, Public Works.
[laughing]
Public Works is going to follow Finance.
Yes.
Public Safety is going to follow Public Works.
All right, anything?
Here's what I, here's what I think. I think we've got Finance starting at 3:45.
Yeah.
And then we have Public Works following that, and then Public Safety, and then planning and development is, just special issues, maybe.
Okay, there we go.
That's, that's what I was trying to say. Yeah, thank you.
All right, Mr. Wolverton, any other comments?
Just a Happy Mother's Day. Hopefully everybody enjoyed it, and that's it.
Great, thank you. Councilor Sims?
Yes, I just, especially with the proclamation today, recognizing May is Mental Health Month, just want to take a moment and show some appreciation for our first responders who dealt with the incident this past Tuesday on Greensprings. I'm sure most of you are familiar with it, but a gentleman had a gun to his head, and our fire, Police Department were able to use de-escalation tactics to calm the gentleman and resolve the situation with him going to the hospital. Homewood Fire also showed up on the scene to help, you know, close out the issue and, and for safe transport. You know, I just think about it for Mental Health Month, and also think about it for the time that we've had on council, the investment everyone's done in making sure that we're getting quality training to staff and our first responders, and also increasing pay and what that does for retention when you're able to keep staff and have those trainings build. Chief Ross shared that actually one of the gentlemen involved in the incident had just returned from some crisis intervention training, and I'm just really appreciative to all of y'all in the city and the culture that, you know, that we've been able to build over this term, and how meaningful that is that we, you know, gave our police department the epitome of what it means to serve and protect, and that was, in this case, to save a life, and appreciate all y'all, and especially Homewood Fire and Homewood Police. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Councilor Brant? Councilor Smith?
To reiterate, Finance will start at 3:45. And, other than that, I'm just really appreciative of our city staff and the Parks and Recs folk who put together We Love Homewood Day. It was challenging to make all the decisions about whether or not to have a parade, whether or not to have a street party, and I think it all went down very well. Missed my last parade ever, but the street party was really fun, and just thankful for all the people who worked really hard to make that happen.
Thank you, Councilor. Do you want us to have a separate parade for you?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay. Counselor Nelms?
No comments.
Okay, Counselor Andrus?
Okay, I will set the meeting for five o'clock, and I want to use the responders